I'm going to be giving comments, public comment at the end of our meetings. There are forms in the back of the room and then pens on the table if you could fill that out and give that to the city clerk's office. Ms. Hoborn, I believe you're going to be speaking on behalf of your group.
My friends.
All right, you don't need to fill yours out, that's fine.
Show your friends.
All right. Mr. Representative, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always a pleasure not only to address you but to jump in front of the line in front of Ryan Bennett. It makes it even more special. Listen, it truly is an honor to be here or to address you as your state representative. You know, I like to get in on occasion just to give you a quick legislative update, kind of let you know what's going on in Lansing from my perspective anyways. And that's what I'm here to do today or tonight. And I would be here for your regular meeting, but we're in session on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so it's much easier for me to get in here tonight before I head to Lansing in the morning. What I have going around to your desk is coming to you, if it's not already there, it'll be coming shortly. It's just a quick synopsis of what I was doing back in 2021 for the whole year. Obviously COVID has disrupted so many things, but I wanted to make sure that you and the rest of the commission was well aware that I've been there and doing all the things that I can do to try to help out our constituents. So whenever you get a chance, take a look at that. And obviously, if you have any questions, just give me a call. But the current atmosphere in Lansing is a little bit different because as you may have heard, that there's a substantial amount of money that we have at our disposal and that we currently have at our disposal. A lot of that is coming from the federal government, so I want to thank the administration at the federal level for making this money available to us to be able to address some of these needs that not only COVID brought on, but a lot of the stuff is, there are things that we've needed to do for a long time in state government. So I'm excited about that. But I tell you, I have to admit, I want to warn you though as well. There's a lot of grandiose ideas out there on how to do different things. Some of these ideas are really being, in my opinion, are really being blown out of proportion. Some of this funding that you may have heard about recently, it's all restricted funds. This is areas that it has to go. So there's no one individual that's orchestrating this whole thing. This is a legislative body that is doing its work on bills that are introduced. And many times, some of these bills are simply handed out to different people and saying, here, we want you to have this one, we want you to have this one over here. It all goes around, so I want to just stress that. I know there was a water infrastructure bill that you may have heard about, which I think on its face is very, very good. You get into the meat and potatoes of it, I think there's some signs for caution there and some of that, you know, has money going into some private hands, that at least that raises a red flag for me. But also the fact that, you know, we're talking about, you know, a significant amount of general fund dollars. And as you know from your own budgeting at the city level, general fund dollars are very, very precious. And we got to make sure that we're spending those appropriately. Now, you cannot, and I will repeat, you cannot spend the kind of money that we're talking about spending, but then also be advocating for tax breaks. You know, there's personal property tax breaks, it bills that have been introduced. You know, if those are passed, that's going to wreck havoc on local units of government. So I just want to make sure that I raise that to you because again, you know, it's that time of the year, you know, it's election time, so we're getting into that season again. So I want to make sure that I raise the flag to all of you to please be aware of what's happening here. And we really need to work all together is what we need to do. And that's what it's going to take. No one individual is going to be able to pull this whole thing through. So I will stop there because I know your work session agenda is very, very long. And I just want to make sure that you know that I'm here, I'm available. Many of you already have my contact information, my personal cellphone number, please use it. If you have any questions at all, just give me a call. If you want to call the office, I know many of you do, not only you as commissioners, but your staff, we work very closely with all your staff and we've had really good luck and I want to commend you on the type of staff that you have representing the city of Muskegon. So with that, I will stop, Mr. Mayor, unless you have any questions for me.
All right, thank you much, Representative Sable. Appreciate you being here tonight and I'm over appreciate your friendship to the city of Muskegon and support for what's happening here in our magnificent city. Commissioners, do you have any questions for our representative while he's here? No? All right, you're off the hook in that regard.
That was easy, all right.
I do have some questions, but I won't put you on the spot.
Just give me a call.
So I'll follow up with you.
Sounds good, thank you. And I apologize for having to leave before your meeting's over, but I have another meeting to get to before it's all said and done tonight, so thank you.
Understandable. Take care and be well. All right. Mr. Bennett. Oh, before that, Madam Clerk, should we do roll call just to make it official, official?
Absolutely.
All right.
Commissioner Hood, absent. Commissioner Ramsey.
Here.
Vice Mayor German.
Here.
Commissioner Gorman.
Here.
Commissioner Emery.
Here.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
All right, now, Mr. Bennett. You are here for Access for All Youth Training Program. The floor is yours.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm happy to be joined by Darius Mitchell with the Urban League and Colleen Sullivan for Access for All. She's with the Workforce Development Institute, which is the human resources arm of the AFL-CIO. We're excited about a potential partnership called Access for All that we're bringing to both the city of Muskegon and the city of Grand Rapids. And how this came about is we all know that there's a need for career exposure for Muskegon young people and the building trades. So first of all, my official paid job title is Business Manager of the Plumbers and Fitters Union here in town. I also serve as the President of the West Michigan Building Trades and Chairman of the Lake Shore Community Labor Council. And what we've recognized in the building trades is we have a little bit of a diversity issue. It's completely accidental, it's not by design, but we feel that we need to take an extra step to get into our urban communities and teach them about what careers and skilled trade apprenticeships like ours look like. Your painters, your bricklayers, plumbers, pipe fitters, boiler makers, operators, carpenters, labors, things of that nature. So the West Michigan Building Trades is proud to team up with the Workforce Development Institute to bring to Muskegon what is sort of a pre-apprenticeship program where we're going to take a cohort of 20 to 25 Muskegon urban area youth and young folks. The target age is 18 to 24, but it's open to everyone, and give them some training that will help them and give them a leg up in applying for building trades apprenticeships like ours. There's going to be, the National Building Trades has a curriculum out there called MC3 Curriculum, that's going to be taught, it's going to be math focused, and there's going to be a lot of hands-on activities. So the folks that come out of this program are likely going to get swooped up or have the opportunity to join building trades apprenticeship programs like ours. So, Colleen, if you want to cue the video, we've got a very inspirational video to share. It's only nine minutes.
You weren't supposed to tell them that beforehand. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the time this evening. I'm going to get right to the video so that we can get to your questions. Tell me when I can share. That's not my screensaver.
Podium is on.
Okay. Derek should.
Derek?
Been plugged in for a minute.
Derek, okay, yeah, that did make sense.
No sound.
How do you get people out of poverty?
You can restart it if you want.
Employment really is the only way to do it. How do you empower residents to kind of be co-leaders, co-creators, co-owners of their future? How do you get people out of poverty? Employment really is the only way to do this.
All in my household was always taught that you go to school and you go to work. That's what I did. I did security for quite a while. And one afternoon, typical day at work, I'm just doing my rounds and a man falls from my parking garage and commits suicide. I became really, really depressed and it was no exit to that depression for me. It was almost like he ended his life and mine as well. My employer laid me off for medical reasons. After that, my life just, it started to down spiral.
I don't know, being home was weird because you don't really think about nobody else. You just wake up and make sure, you know, everything is pretty much safe around, you make sure, you know. At first, I used to be scared, I used to hang somebody trying to break in my car and I'm in here and they don't know and then might get shot randomly. But that's how I started parking in the suburbs, like I'll come out here, I pull up like by the tree or something like a little corner. Some places it's 24 hours, so it's always traffic. And so you never really get noticed.
I have to get out of my car, I have to get to safe shelter, you know, no matter what it takes.
Latasha's story certainly speaks to me about the power of a job and the opportunity it affords and what an individual will do to be able to have access to that opportunity.
The reason Access for All was started is there was a need in our industry to bring on more construction workers. And so we developed a nine-week program so we can make sure that folks who come through this program do get a job opportunity.
And Detroit is a labor town, and so in order to solve this question of how do you get people good jobs in industries, in the skilled trades, you had to work with labor. And United Way gave us as funders an opportunity to really fund opening up of skilled trades to Detroiters.
For a long time, it seems like skilled trades in general has been looked down upon and it shouldn't be that way. It's a viable alternative to higher education. It is higher education.
My hope in this region is that we are able to increase the number of individuals that are earning a sustainable wage. And in order to do that, they need to be adequately prepared for every opportunity that's out there.
I heard about the program when I was attending a church service and I had went to go apply for Access for All just for my brothers. I felt that it would be good for them to check it out, but in return, the doors opened up for me and now I'm sitting in the program. I walked in and I immediately felt intimidated. I'm like, wow, like all of these guys, man, they know about tools and here I am with my nails and my earrings, so what am I doing in here? Coming up, I had nobody tell me that I could do it or step out on faith and try, but the guys have been nothing but supportive. They've been like big brothers to me, they've tucked me under their wings.
From day one, we had a contract. And there's no one left behind. At first, we didn't know each other, but now I feel like I've been knowing them my whole life, so I treat them like they're my brothers and my sisters.
It's a good thing to go out to these apprenticeship schools and be able to see, you know, what work is performed in the fields. And it's good to see what's expected of you when you go out there in the field. That helps them to choose what direction they want to go into.
This is a great program. It's just a blessing. I mean, you got somebody that's willing to help you and they pushing you, you can't get that all the time. You got to take advantage. You got to take advantage.
I need Access for All to be access to a home. I need to have access to employment. I need access to a safe environment. I need access to clean water. I need access to other opportunities. Welcome to our graduation. We made it.
You know, we just appreciate everything that everybody has done, everybody that had a hand and to believing in us, what we can do. And we're all excited, we're ready to work, and we won't let you down.
I'm so grateful and I look forward to my journey because this is the reward, the journey itself. Thank you guys so much. Access for All, I am done. I have a job. I'm at Dan's Escavating as an apprentice of operating engineers. I have learned so much. I operate a machine called the roller, so I'm responsible for compacting the sand before we can lay our stone and our asphalt. Aw, man. So can I come pick it up today? Oh, sweet, okay. I'll be right back up there then. Thank you so much. Go get started. I was told to listen now, I haven't got home. The journey has been like none other, like I can't even explain. Like it's been so emotional, so many ups, so many downs, so many turns, but to finally have that lease sign and those keys to my keychain, I said, I have a good job, I have a home. What? What are they missing as a husband? How could I be that? I'd be perfect. This is my last request.
All right, so that was a very impactful video that I watched about a year ago. And I've been talking about this program everywhere I've been since then. Now, I'm a 20-year member of the West Michigan Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, but I'm that because I knew what it was. My dad and two of my uncles were union pipe fitters. I knew about the career path that that looked like and what that meant and what kind of wages and benefits came along with that. And so I feel like a lot of the areas throughout the city of Muskegon might not have that same exposure, and that's what this program is aimed to help provide to the community. Also, a dual benefit, it's going to help us as building trades craftsmen and women be more representative of the communities in which we work. So we pride ourselves on our ability to provide a local workforce, no matter where we're working throughout our 13-county jurisdiction. And so diversity is going to be very key for us going forward. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
One more thing I'd like to add to that too is that this program, as you can see from the video, this was from our start in the Detroit area, but we have since taken this to other communities like Kalamazoo, Battle Creek, we're now in Saginaw and Jackson for the first time, and we have produced the same results. So this formula that we've built has been proven to be mobile and successful in new communities, so any questions at all, I'd be happy to answer them.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Bennett and Mr. Mitchell for your presentation and lightning. Commissioners, do you have any questions or input? Yes, Commissioner Ramsey.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Ryan, thank you for being here. I was very excited to hear about this at the last meeting that I was at. And I'm excited, even more excited to learn about it now. I think one of the most important things that I noticed here was the conversation around access and how Ryan said that, you know, he's a part of this because he knew. So I really have questions about the facilitation and education of this program in our community here in Muskegon, so that the right people are getting reached, Darius. And I want to know, without asking anyone to get into the weeds about it, how we're going to look at addressing the needs in areas of our community in a real and relevant way so that this program is accessible to them regardless of...
So in every community, we have a local advisory board and we see them as key stakeholders and partners in any work that we're doing in a community. So we're not looking to disrupt any relationships that are there, but rather to build upon them. And I think that trust is a huge thing, building relationships is a huge thing when it comes to making a program accessible. And so for that reason, that local advisory board, which we have formed one, we anticipate that that'll grow over the years that this program is offered, but it really needs to tap into the heart of the communities that we're trying to reach so that not only do we have real on-the-ground resources when it comes to supportive services, which are a big part of this program, is removing barriers, but also that trusted person to open the door and invite us in, whether it be in the faith community or any other kind of community that's out there that has the folks that we're trying to reach.
So have you already established that board here in our community?
So there is a board that has been established. I anticipate that there will be more members down the road, but yes, and it has community members as well as our contractors, labor partners, and the ISD as well.
Darius, do you know people on this board?
Absolutely, myself.
Yep, thank you.
Myself, personally, as a resident in Muskegon Heights and Muskegon County. Chauncey Williams, who's another person in the community. Myself professionally, as the Director of Housing and Economic Security for the Urban League of West Michigan. We have just met with Ryan to see exactly what we can do to help further this program to be a direct advocate, so we're working those things out. Myself professionally before that, personally, excuse me, before that professional relationship takes full hold, then myself and Chauncey would be into those smaller communities, into the high schools to make sure that those underrepresented, excuse me, underrepresented companies, excuse me, I forget the word I'm looking for here. It escapes me, I'm sorry, but those underserved communities are represented in that space. So there is intentional effort and we look for more help as we move forward. Sorry about that.
No, that's perfect. I'm very excited to hear you say all of that and to use the word intentional. I think that a lot of the times in our community, we have the best of intentions, right? And we want to get out there and do these great things, but unless we have those relationships and that trust and that there are people who are trying to help us that look like us and come from where we come from, it's not going to happen. And so so many times, we are like a dog chasing our own tail and we go out, we're going to do these great things and it doesn't quite happen because we don't have people and places of power to make those connections. So I'm excited to hear about all of those things. And great job. That's all from me.
Vice Mayor German.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say thank you, first of all, to Mr. Bennett, Ms. Sullivan, and Mr. Mitchell on your work and everything that you're doing here in the city of Muskegon.
On your work and efforts that you're doing here in the city of Muskegon, this is something that is very needed, much overdue. I remember at Muskegon High School, when they had a vocational program, you could do welding, drafting, foundry, and electrical work, electrical classes. So, and something that I really see dear and that's needed to young people who really haven't made that decision on whether they want to further their career and going to college. And I just really think that this is going to be a benefit to the people in the community and the youth that's coming up. One of the questions that I do have is, I think you mentioned that you're going to select about 25 candidates. And once that pool or that cohort has completed the task and graduated, will there be a reoccurring process going as well?
Yeah, so we don't ever come into a community without doing extensive research about the need that exists here because we're not interested in just training people for the sake of training them. So, and we also don't just use the labor statistics. We also talk to our labor partners, our contractors, who know, who have, you know, their finger on the pulse about what really that looks like in terms of longevity for that need. And so we've definitely determined that this is an appropriate fit and our intention is to be here as long as the need exists.
Sounds good. Well, like I said, I'm excited and I support this and I'm looking forward to the city working with you all.
Anything else, Commissioners? All right, excellent. Thanks for coming back to us. We had a presentation last year, I think June, with regard to this program and getting it underway and launching a burgeoning partnership with our city and other local institutions like Muskegon Community Education Center. So I'm having to build on that partnership. Did we, I remember talk of funding. I thought we'd allocated some money from our CDBG funds last year. Can staff confirm that? Is it Ms. Bailey? She's our Community Neighborhood Services Director. She oversees the community development black grant money. So I just want to get some insights there. So we already allocated some money from our previous allotment of CDBG. Do we anticipate re-upping that? Or can you give any insights to what our outlook is for how we might be able to support this program with funding?
Absolutely. Right now, we do have a proposal, a public notice out to the public and to agencies. If they have a program, a project that would affect change in our community with CDBG, that they fill out those applications right now. So they do have an application. They asked me how much. I said, well, how much do you need? So it's really up to each agency what they feel they need to get the job done. And so the applications are out and we will receive them in the clerk's office on the 22nd of this month. See all of the proposals that we receive and how much we can assist and which projects we select.
Okay, so it's not a re-upping at this point?
No.
It's still determining the necessary allocation of resources to get the program underway.
Correct. We know that we are interested and we like what is being proposed, and so we wanted to be able to offer that to them this year. And this was the time that we had stated that we wanted to be able to come back to the commission to bring it to you so you could see it again fresh. And so when we come with our grants to give to different organizations, then you'll remember them for funding.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, I look forward to receiving that proposal. Commissioner St. Clair.
Thank you. This is really, really exciting. As a social worker out in the world, working with high-needs young adults, there is such a gap in services that this could be really useful. I do have a question, though. Is this a felony-friendly program?
It is. We absolutely work with and actually make outreach within the returning citizens' community. There are a couple exceptions. There are primarily criminal sexual charges, just because we are aiming for success. And if someone isn't going to be able to place in the industry that they want to work in, we're not going to give them false hopes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I look forward to hearing more and looking at proposal and getting the recommendations from staff as to how much resource to allocate. How else can we be a partner? And I've spoken to our city manager recently about wanting to connect on a routine basis, developers, investors, folks involved with projects, particularly projects that has a city involvement or city support, just routinely connecting them to, you know, Access For All or MCEC's other initiatives that are trying to get off the ground is School as City, which is kind of a pre-apprenticeship situation because it's a younger cohort. But just connecting our youth and young adults to the trades and career exploration and being able to make money and in terms of the student age, be able to get those credits as well. But really importantly, having them to have that buy-in into the progress and development that's happening around them. So it's not just happening to them or at them, but with them, and so they can be a part of that. But if you could speak to how we might be able to strengthen that partnership and build that outside of just giving you dollars, outside of just giving you money?
Sure. In the short term, we could use all of your help in promoting this program. We are live with applications right now. If you find it on Facebook, you can go to search Access For All slash WDI. You'll get a Google form that'll be the application. Once someone fills out that application, they'll be contacted and invited to a virtual information session where they'll vet each candidate to see if they have the necessary qualifications to continue through the process. Long-term, I mean, ultimately, our goal of the building trades, like I said, is we want local workers for local jobs. Now, you guys bid out construction services occasionally, and we need you to place a value on what programs like this bring to the community. And it's tough, a lot of times, when you're strictly looking at numbers, to see who the low and most qualified bid is. But having local workers build their communities instills a sense of pride and it establishes that career pathway that we're trying to do. I mean, we can train all of the best building trades craftsmen and women this community has to offer. If they got to go to Grand Rapids to work, or Holland to work, or if we're bringing workers from those communities here, we are just going to be training people to go somewhere else eventually. So that is up to you and how you can quantify that. I know that there are rules that specify what you can and cannot do, but just continuing these conversations to try to make sure that this pipeline from Muskegon area to the Muskegon construction project stays solidified would be mutually beneficial, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's so important on so many different levels, but training up our own local workforce and keeping those dollars circulating in our community to support other lives, livelihoods, entrepreneurship. So absolutely, so important on so many levels. So I'm excited to continue partnering with you and growing that partnership and benefiting our mutual organizations and community. So thank you. Unless there's anything else, Commissioners? All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much. Take care.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, so next up, we have arena restaurants and ADA improvements. I believe our city manager is leading out on that.
Yep, yep. So I'll just give a brief overview of where we are and what we're trying to accomplish, and then I'll take any questions. But essentially, back in 2015, this will be the first problem we're trying to solve. Back in 2015, those of you that have been around a while know that we had a large storage building across the street from the arena, kind of like adjacent to the mart dock, that stored pretty much everything that we needed at the arena. Tables, chairs, the football turf, all those things. In 2015, we lost it in a windstorm. It blew over, and it didn't make sense to rebuild it for a number of reasons. One, the replacement cost was quite a bit more at the time. And two, in order to build it the way that would have met the Form-based code over there, it didn't make a whole lot of sense. It would have been a pretty expensive building. And then, three, we weren't sure, you know, what the arena was going to continue doing. And so what we did was, we got rid of as much of the stuff in there that we could get rid of. So the tables and chairs were old anyway. We sold those off and then put a plan together to just rent tables and chairs when we needed them. We only needed them a handful of times a year, and it was, it made more sense to not sort of those on site. But since that time, we added a new, like a new floor. If you remember, we added this new home assault floor. We added the football, the new football turf. We've added a number of other things to do, to do more things in the community. And so we have a need for storage. We don't want to build it across the street. We've been trying across the street to use, like, storage shipping containers. And a good example of it was when we had the last soccer game, not this weekend, but the weekend before, there was a snowstorm. And essentially, we're trying to drive across the highway with rolls of, you know, with 15,000-pound rolls of carpet on the front of a forklift. And it was just really an accident waiting to happen, and we don't want to do that anymore than we have to. The problem is, football games are in the winter. So probably there's a likelihood that that will continue to happen if we continue to try to bring it across the street. So what we're, so the idea that we have is essentially, if you're familiar with the arena, this space right here, which is the alleyway between the arena, kind of behind the CIO hall and Pigeon Hill and behind the annex, we have this staircase right here. The staircase has been a big problem for us also because it's the main point of exiting for the arena that really nobody can use because it's very steep and it's slippery most of the time because it's snowing during the games and stuff. And it's just not really usable. So actually, nobody uses it. Luckily, there haven't been any emergencies where people have had to go out there, but if you were excessive, if you had a mobility issue, you couldn't get out that way anyway. You'd have to go down the stairs. So the idea that we came up with was to essentially remove the stairs, build what'll amount to about the size of a three-car garage under where the stairs are with a platform up above, and then ramp the exit to Western Avenue. So essentially, you'll have a barrier-free entrance from that point of the arena back towards Western Avenue, where you're probably parked anyway and, you know, and where it's more convenient for people to leave. And as part of doing that, we wanted to regrade the slope so that you could actually have a point where you enter back into the arena where the new bathrooms are. Those new bathrooms are set up in a way for a really, for a small amount of money, we can make those forward-facing when there's not events going on at the arena. So this, we've talked over and over again about, when do we get public restrooms downtown? How do we afford to do that? When do we take care of them? Well, we have these restrooms that are used 50 times a year, but otherwise, they're kind of just locked up and sitting there. And in the summertime is when they're not being used. And so the idea is, we could add a little vestibule when you walk in there. You can get access to the men's and women's room. We can lock it from the other way so you can't get back into the arena. And then all of a sudden, during Rebel Road, during bike time, during busy Saturdays, during street performers, all these things, instead of having 15 porta-johns set out on Western Avenue, we can just have a sign that directs people down this alleyway. And originally, we thought, hey, let's use some of this money to build a restroom in an appropriate place downtown. But with the cost of construction, it was going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that anyway. But here, we'll put the hundreds of thousands of dollars into storage, which we really need, and then get the restrooms for, you know, I think the cost on here, we estimate like $50,000 or $60,000 to make the restroom modification, maybe a little bit more than that. But something much more reasonable. So we're trying to kill, that's not, that's right, we're trying, we're trying to beat three things at once. We're trying to improve the egress accessibility out of the arena. We're trying to get some much-needed storage, mainly for the football turf. And then we're going to try to get access to the bathrooms for everyday summertime events. And right now, we have, we're estimating at about $750,000. That is not the cost of the construction, but that does include a few hundred thousand dollars that we've estimated would be spent kind of in this area down here, replacing the concrete and replacing some utilities and stuff underground while we have it ripped up. It just makes sense. If you go down that alley, you can tell that concrete probably hasn't been, it probably hasn't been replaced in 70 years. It's been there a long time and it's in need of replacement anyway. So that's the big picture of the project. Our thought process is, we allocate some money every year for ADA, so hopefully we can use some of that. We have some ARPA dollars that we think will be qualified. We'll use some of that. And then we have the equivalent water sewer and street infrastructure dollars that we'll use for those portions. So this won't be like a project that costs one budget $750,000. It'll be a budget that costs about $750,000 probably, you know, through five or six different pieces of the budget. And timing-wise, it's important because we can't, we can't lose those bathrooms during season, right? So we pretty much have a finite time to do it. And so with the lead times and stuff, our thought is, if we can get this designed now, we can start the work as soon as the lumberjack season ends, which would be probably, depending off how far they go in the playoffs, sometime after the, like, the college and high school graduations that use the facility. So like, maybe second week in June. But really, we'd only have until August to get it done because the preseason will start right up at the end of August. And so it really is only this small, this small window of time if we want to try to complete the project.
Proud of that. Thank you, Ms. Manager. Yeah, I was hoping maybe, you know, piggybacking off of the presentation XSL, maybe this could be an Access For All project. However, the timeline doesn't line up with their, you know, local inaugural class, which would be in the fall, but certainly would be fitting if we could do that right next to our AFL-CIO hall downtown as well. All right, so this is on, yes.
And you brought them up. We think that we can help solve, maybe, they're not, Ryan already left, but we'll work with them because we think they've got an exiting issue probably out of the back of their building with the old staircase that looks like it's seen, it's seen better days as well, that we, we think that we can work together and maybe give them a safer, better, more accessible exit out of the back of their building as well.
Yes, thank you. Yes, please engage with our neighbors there and collaborate with them going forward and communicate. They don't always feel like they're sometimes left out of the loop of what's happening around them. All right, excellent. And this is going to be on our agenda tomorrow for approval.
Yes, and John from Spark 43 will be here to answer any questions about why he's recommended the design that you see on there and why he thinks it'll work. And he and Jeff put together the cost estimate. So if there's any technical questions, they're the ones to answer them tomorrow.
All right, excellent. In the meantime, Commissioners, do you have any questions for our manager? Yes, Commissioner Ramsey. Yep. Mr. Manager, I just want to be super clear that this is for both the storage, this $750,000 is for both the storage facility and the access ramp with the front-facing restrooms all encompassed, right?
And the improvements in the alley. So there's some water and sewer line replacement in the alley, probably some stormwater, and then a new asphalt alley instead of concrete.
Awesome. I think this is super exciting, Frank, and thank you. And I want to thank you for thinking about the accessibility and the needs of our neighbors who might have, who might be differently abled when we're downtown at all these wonderful events that we have, right? Because it's not easy to get equipment through a busy bar or restaurant if you have to use the restroom and you can't get into a porta potty, whether they're handicap accessible, air quotes or not. I think this is awesome. So thank you so much for that and for the forethought there. Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Ramsey. Any other comments or questions at this time? All right. I'll just say did it, look, Commissioner Ramsey said.
He speaks for us all.
All right. So now, on to marijuana consumption community outreach. And we have our planning manager, Mike Franzic, reporting out on this. Good evening.
Got some updated information.
Want me to share with my friends?
Yes, please.
Is it just one page, Mike?
Yes. Well, it's on the back, too.
Well, you know what I mean.
So when I sent out the initial information, I sent out the quotes to the Lamar billboards. There were seven different ones. On this chart here, I broke those down into six different locations and what that total would be. But those prices were, that was the price per cycle, and then there's a production cost of $1,008. So if you total it all up, you can see between the six different locations of what it would cost. Since I've been working with Lamar, I've also been working with other staff in our department. And we actually do have the electronic message boards at the arena and at the industrial park, which we think would also be a great place to display them, especially the industrial park, because if you see some of the ads in there, they're about consuming marijuana and getting a job. So we think that would be a good place to put them. They're, it's quite a bit cheaper as well. I think we'd get our bang for our buck. And you'll remember, a few months ago, we had Jill Montgomery Keast from the Muskegon County Health Department here. She went over some of the ads that they said that we could use, and she also went over some of the lockup bags that they could provide. They could provide us up to 5,000 of them and information, the stuff in them, about safe consumption during pregnancy and work, workplace, things like that. So that would be a total of $3,000 for that. So there's a couple of different ways we can do it. I guess staff would probably recommend, recommendation number one. We have recommendation number one, and also recommendation number two on the back. But recommendation one would be the $3,000 for the provisioning center bags and 11 months of the industrial park. and, uh, eleven months of the industrial park message board and ten months of the arena board would get us to just about the amount of money we need to spend.
And one thing I think to point out too about that, the industrial park message board, uh, Pete, we run that on both signs, correct? So it's two, two sided signs. It's one out on Black Creek and then the one on Laketon Avenue at the, at the highway, both highly visible.
Oh, the, yep.
They're brand new signs that we bought with the grant, with the, um, with the, um.
Prison property grant.
Yes.
And I'd like us to also pick, uh, which messages we would like to go with. Uh, the one at the industrial park, we might need to play around with. We're not a hundred percent sure it's going to be totally visible with that many words on that type of sign, but we're going to test it out. Uh, if not, we can tweak it just a little bit to have it fit.
Commissioners, any input, questions? Skimming over the, the content included in the paper right now. So this would be using our initial first year allocation of the money set aside for youth outreach and education.
Yes.
Um, and then we have additional money coming up. We could allocate in the same way or we could decide to do something differently, but this is the first year, um, allotment.
Yeah, I'd like to come back maybe in a month or two and talk about possible revisions, how we'd like to allocate the money.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, that's reasonable. Yes, Commissioner Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Forensic, are you asking us about these specific advertisements that are included?
Yes, there's that one and there's also one here, a little more. That one didn't get included, but I was reminded that they have that one as well, so.
I love this one. I also love the ones that say never mix cannabis and driving. Um, so I don't know if, if, um, you guys remember, but a couple, a couple of years ago, maybe, or if anyone out there remembers, um, the, we have a local, um, coalition. Yeah, we have a local coalition called Outfront and they do a lot about, um, sexual education. And they started in partnership, I think it was with Rebel, um, a wonderful campaign called, don't, don't be a chlamydia as in chlamydia, because Meskeen County is the highest chlamydia rate in the state. And I think that while these opportunities here for advertisement are great, they might be, we might be able to make them a little more relevant for our youth in the community. And so maybe some partnership with, with whoever did that campaign, uh, not that I'm telling you how to do your job. But like that campaign got national recognition, um, because chlamydia, I mean, how funny is that, right? And so, uh, I think that there's some, like I see the word toke here and we talked about toking when I was in high school. Is that still a thing? Do kids still toke?
Maybe vape.
Maybe vape.
Maybe they vape. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Uh, marijuana was ever, never my drug of choice. But, uh, so I think that this looks great. I'm excited that it's very targeted toward youth and, um, and adolescent individuals and especially those looking for employment because we know there's opportunity there here in Meskeen County. But I think that we could really up our game on some of this, um, advertisement if we have a, a marketing partner who could really make it stick. And maybe we have two nationally recognized campaigns out of Meskeen County.
Yeah, I happen to have spoken to, just by chance, we crossed paths today, one of the people involved with the creation of the content that the public health has been using, including what's, um, in our, in our packet here. And she had mentioned that when it comes to youth outreach, she's not the person. She's like, that's not my forte.
Turns out me neither, right?
Creating content and marketing for adult to adult. She was like, but trying to communicate to, to youth, she was like, that's not my forte. So, um, we may have to seek out someone else that, that has greater experience, um, and expertise in that regard.
Other than that, yeah, my, uh, Mr. Forensic, I think this is great. And thank you for, for putting a lot of thought into how we can continue to address the opportunities for both cannabis use and then, um, responsibility in our community. So thank you.
Who did the design work? Are we allowed to know or talk about that?
Yeah, it's the Meskeen County Health Department came up with these ads.
Nice.
So they're already using them in other places.
Yeah, my only concern, well, not concern, what I want to say is I love the messaging, but I almost feel like there needs to be some other resource about how to get home if you're not able to drive home, which is an issue in our community. Like that's what this makes me think of. So I don't know. That's just feedback.
That's a good point.
I support.
Yeah, and I was thinking a, a, as well in terms of like, um, and this goes back to the marketing outreach, not just a billboard, because a billboard is not going to reach youth that we're trying to reach as part of the, the outreach and the education. So other ways to, to reach, um, youth in our community about, um, you know, abusing cannabis, um, at a young age impacting on their development. And so I don't know the answer to, to that, that messaging or how, how we do that work, but, um, that's something that, you know, we've talked about. Well, past Commissions have talked about when we sat out with our social equity program and setting aside money for, uh, outreach and, and education. So that'd be something that, that would be interesting to me or of interest to me. Um, I did happen to, to reach out to former Commissioner Rensmussen Sebenga because, um, this, uh, programming, this, this education outreach was very important to him when we established, um, you know, our cannabis ordinance as well as the local social equity program. And he, he said this was great stuff. This was in alignment, well, you know, what you presented in our packet, um, I shared it with him and he thought it was good stuff and, um, aligned with what he was envisioning at, at the very least. So I just wanted to share that to give additional context and perspective since he was one of the, the Commissioners involved with, with crafting this. So, did you have something, Vice Mayor German?
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, yeah, I definitely would like to see something targeting our youth, uh, most definitely. Even if it's, uh, just going in and educating them face to face. Um, you know, growing up in an urban area, um, I've seen a lot, you know, with, um, youth and drugs, alcohol, early ages. And, you know, this is something that happens across all ethnic groups as well. But, um, ones that's underserved and not represented fully, I see it in, um, urban communities. Um, and it just, you know, at an early age, it limits their opportunities for growth for is a better quality of life. Um, starting out smoking marijuana, you know, then it escalates probably to something else, you know? So it's definitely a dire need to have, um, some form of education really targeting youth. And not to say that now we have several dispensaries along Laketon and, uh, Peck that's not too far from our middle school. You know, that's an issue and concern. That's something that I've, uh, I've stated when we, you know, looked at putting these dispensaries there. Now, you know, these kids have access to it, just like cigarettes and alcohol. They'll find a way to get it. So, um, we need to really, you know, focus in and hone in on some education for our youth, I think. Just my perspective on that. Definitely, yep.
So, Mr. Forensic, do you have enough information from what you're hearing from the Commission on how to proceed? I know there's an item on our agenda tomorrow, right now with a recommendation to, um, move forward with the purchase of those billboards with what we're being presented with the work session, like we're going to change, uh, tactic or tact a, a little bit in terms of using some of our own, uh, properties that are, that are digital and highly visible. Um, in, instead of that, is this what you, what you're presenting tonight is what you anticipate bringing forward tomorrow? And then you're asking the Commission to, you know, choose option one or option two? Um, and then maybe some of the other input you're hearing could be incorporated into future outreach or education. Um, this seems to be a focus on, and this I remember, um, when we had this conversation, it was important to, uh, Commissioner Rensmussen Sebenga and Commissioner, um, Turnquist, I'm pointing to where he used to sit, about harm reduction. Um, and that seems to be reflected in, in the content being put out there. So there's wondering if the Commission is, is comfortable with this content as is for this round of educational outreach and incorporating the feedback we've heard tonight into the next round. Um, if that works or, you know, what's, what's your, uh, perspective or take on that? But if beforehand, if, if, if you, if I'm going to call on Commissioner Ramsey, um, Mr. Forensic.
Yeah, I just want to know which one of these you want us to do, Michael.
Well, I guess what I.
My question.
Yeah. Just in, you know, only, only in three or four words for me.
What I'm thinking is after hearing tonight's concerns, I think the mayor summed it up pretty good. I think we can take those, uh, other suggestions into account for the next round of funding. I really like the idea of maybe people going into schools, uh, and doing some educational seminars. Um, but if, or tomorrow, if we want to just go with the billboards, um, and, and get that approved to spend, I, I think I would recommend that we just go with the city billboards and the community or, or the, the Meskeen Health, uh, Meskeen Health Departments, um, their bat, the red bags that they have for consumption.
Great. Okay. So is that option one or two?
That would be option number one.
Awesome.
Thirteen thousand five hundred.
So then tomorrow our, our agenda can just reflect that?
Yes, I can get that edited, uh, changed to Anne.
Excellent. So, yeah, you got a copy of this down there? Okay, perfect. All right. Anything else, Commissioners?
Uh, do you guys want to pick which billboard to use?
Oh.
Oh, which I.
Or do you want to?
Which exactly.
You can trust us.
Couple of them.
Yeah, I.
And we, if we're, we're using the city ones, we can rotate them out too.
Yeah, that's the nice thing about the digital billboards, they can be rotated out.
So we can just go ahead and do that if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
How many, excuse me?
Yes.
How, how many total billboards are we looking at, Mr. Forensic?
Uh, well, the two in, at the industrial park, there's two there and then the one at the arena. So that'd be retotal.
Great. And they're all double sided.
Yep. That's a good thing.
Yeah, because the billboard is probably not only one sided.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Forensic. Next up, we have Bang the Table. I believe our city clerk is leading out on that.
Sure, sure. Well, as you all are familiar with, we, uh, went with a social media platform last year. It took us a while to get up and going with it. So I don't think we got it going until around August. Um, we were put on a mission by, you know, management now to look for something that, uh, that we could go ahead and we could give out surveys, um, be able to break down the platform so you could find things easier. Um, so it just had started, uh, rolling out and then it kind of got stalled a little bit. Um, the renewal is up right now. Um, Pete, uh, Wills has been working really hard on our website and, um, in the meantime, found several, um, other cities that have the same platform, actually Bang the Table has really grown in popularity in the past year and has been purchased by Granicus. Um, and really liked the format. So we've kind of gotten away from what we originally wanted it for, which was more about social media content. And he saw a lot of other, um, uh, applications in the software itself that, uh, it is capable of doing. And he really likes, um, the sight of it and, and what it feels like. But our, uh, there was a meeting last week I unfortunately could not make, but my understanding is our IT department has indicated that they could, uh, produce what Bang the Table is doing in a relatively short amount of time and make it look, uh, very similar and that. And so if that is the case, then, um, we wouldn't need to renew this. Once we do let it go, it would be done, um, you know, at this time, which is February ninth. Um, so it's coming right up on us, uh, right now. But, um, yeah, so at this time, we're recommending that staff does not rec, um, renew and that we let our IT department go ahead and recreate, uh, the, the items that, you know, Pete thinks would be very valuable in our website design.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yes.
And I, and I can kind of build on that. I was at, I was at the meeting and, um, I think what, really what we said was, um, assuming the IT can handle it, which they've assured us they could, we would still like to use some of this mon, some of the dollars that we were going to spend on Bang the Table to make sure that they have the support for the things that maybe they're not as confident in getting done. So maybe some graphics design support or maybe some support from one of their other, um, IT development partners. Um, so maybe they wouldn't necessarily use all of the fifteen thousand dollars, but instead, um, use, use essentially what they needed to recreate this and make it more long term, work, work for our needs. Um, you know, I, I was with Anne. I thought Bang the Table was, was going to be a good solution for us. Um, it's, what I found was from a social media standpoint, it's too, it's too hard to change people's, you know, their, they want to go to, to Facebook. That's the spot, you know, that's where people are, continue to look for what they want. And it was really hard to, to change where people look for, for those things. Um, but I do agree that Pete, Pete found some great ways to do, to engage people on our ARPA spending and a number of other things that I think that Bang the Table had demonstrated to us. But, um, but, um, Jim and his IT department are very confident that actually what they're doing is, is a, is very much a normal IT, you know, behind the scenes, you know, function that they could do. Um, and so I think we sat around the table and said, let's let them pull it together and then just really support them and encourage them to say, okay, if we're not going to use Bang the Table, then you gotta come through and do these things. Um, and so as long as Jim's going to give me the thumbs up from back there that he's, him and his guys are going to be able to do it, um, then, you know, then, then Bang the Table becomes more, kind of obsolete for us. Um, so is that fair, Anne?
Yes, very. Thank you.
Thank you for the additional insights. Commissioners, questions, input? So I was on the Commission last year when we, um, first subscribed to this and I was excited about its potential uh, and the possibilities with it, particularly as a way to, uh, and improve engagement with our citizenry, uh, helping to inform as well as receive feedback. Um, it hasn't quite panned out like we expected. There've been hiccups along the way. And, you know, I've shared my misgivings with one aspect of the Terms of Service as well with staff after, you know, learning, learning about it, um, you know, which was basically, it didn't sit well with me that in, having our citizens engage City Hall via this service required them to basically explicitly acknowledge it's not a public forum and they're waiving their First Amendment rights. Um, and their content's not protected by the First Amendment. That didn't sit well with me. So, um, I prefer trying to build up these capabilities on our website. I look at best practices as how, uh, Bang the Table is used by other municipalities, particularly Aurora. Uh, Director Wills found a, a, a great site there, um, with, with some, uh, interesting ways in which they use that. And I would really love to incorporate that into our website, um, and then, uh, promulgate that through our social media sites as well. I find value of us building it out on our own website rather than using a third party service for that. Um, for a couple of different reasons. One, we have, you know, more latitude and flexibility in how it's being built out and we don't have to include such language as those, those Terms of Service, um, that they had. But also there's not going to be that risk of losing all of that data if that company goes under or the company decides, you know, we've been using it for five years and now they want to jack up the price, you know, threefold. And we almost feel hostage to continue using because that's what we've built our City Hall operations on as well as how we engage residents and residents become used to it, that, um, that's a little bit of a concern there. So if we were able to build it out ourselves internally while looking for those best practices from other municipalities, is other, uh, whether they're using Bang the Table or some other service, but incorporating that because I see that as a, as a, yeah, and I'd prefer a way to move forward. But one other thing, while we talk about social media, um, a year and a half ago, the Commission, prior Commission, a couple, we've got a couple of new people on here for the prior Commission. And I see this as a part and parcel of this kind of engagement. Um, we had, um, directed, uh, management to look at hiring and creating a social media coordinator position. And I don't think we've had much progress in that regard. So I don't know if anyone's, uh, uh, capable of giving an update on that right now, but I would like to hear about that and how that plays into this platform and our over, our engagement overall. Um, because I see in my mind, you know, I'm not speaking for the Commission or anyone else, in my mind, the social media coordinator is someone that could on, on our Facebook and other sites be able to respond to people's questions, um, give factual information or direct them to the appropriate resources to get that, um, perhaps serve as at some level of moderation as well, um, to, to keep it civil and productive in terms of the conversation on, on there. But I really see value in having someone be able to respond to people and direct them to the right resources, the right department, the right people. And it's not just people speaking into a void, um, on social media sites. So, yes, Madam Clerk.
I absolutely, uh, agree with you, Mayor. And, um, our deputy city manager put together a, a great job description that I reviewed today that was sent, um, to Duana to put on our civil service. So that is going to go on our next civil service meeting, which I believe is next week, Monday, um, to approve that. Monday, to approve that job description. So we are in the process of making that happen right now.
Excellent.
And also expanding my office area. We'll talk about that later, but that looks like.
So do the things that I said, do they align or are they included in the job description?
It was all in there. Yeah, I'm sorry, but you, it sounds like you read it already.
Excellent. I haven't seen it, but I look forward to seeing it.
Did a great job.
And more importantly, getting, getting someone in that position and more support for our clerk's office as well in that regard. Can I imagine they'd be operating within the clerk's office or?
Yes, they might sit on, I'm not sure, but yes.
Okay, that's CBD? Okay.
Yeah, it will be there somewhere, yes.
At least can, can provide some support or assistance or collaboration with your department.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions or input? While we're speaking of Bang the Table, because Bang the Table, I see, and what we're trying, the capabilities we're trying to replicate with our own city website, I mean, it's really trying to further that engagement, further that information and, and, and trying to have City Hall be more transparent in all of our processes as well as receptive to that feedback and responsive. And so one of the things in that vein is like getting our agendas published sooner and making them more accessible. And so thank you to all of our departments and our divisions and our clerk's office for working on that. Our deputy clerk, Kim, for, for getting our agendas published sooner. Now we're getting them out, targeting a week before our general sessions. So we're trying to give people more time, commissioners and the public alike, more time to review and digest what's in these packets. Sometimes we are exhausting the alphabets with these agendas and they can run into hundreds of pages. So it's always good to have more time to digest that and engage one another. So thank you for, for that. And thank you to the IT department. I just saw you added today, making the agendas more prominent on our, on our website. You sent me the email too, that, to follow up on our previous conversation of creating an email notification service so that people can sign up and say, I want to be notified every time the city work session's published or general session's published or, you know, some other press releases put out there or other notices going on the website. So that our residents don't have to continuously be checking our website to get this information, but they can be automatically emailed, sign up for it and automatically be emailed for it so they can stay in the loop about what's going on at City Hall.
And I'd like to point out, I think we only had one revision this time so far. Only one, only one packet revision over the last two weeks.
Yes, and much, much, we're still working the kinks out of it, but it's a much more smoother process this last time around than earlier in the year. All right, commissioners though, what, so what are your ideas? Or think about this, if you can't speak to it right now, pass it along to the clerk's office, pass it along to our IT department. They want to hear from you, they want to hear from us, we, the representatives who engage that website often, who are also responsible for informing and engaging our residents. So if you have ideas for how to improve that engagement or improve the dissemination of information, please share that with our clerk's office and with an IT department and the public too. If you have ideas about that, let us know so that we can attempt to incorporate that. So unless there's any input or questions or comments right now? All right, we're going to move on to the next item then. And so this item, the Bang the Table is not on our agenda tomorrow because we're not going to take any action.
Correct.
We'll just let it expire.
Just let it expire.
No need to make a decision.
Is there any value to putting it in a dormant state and remaining access to that data? And I guess that's a question for IT slash Director Wills. If there's any value, maybe you can chew on that or reflect on that between now and tomorrow, if there's any value putting it in a dormant state and still having access to any data that's there. Or you can pull all the data and you don't need it in a dormant state.
We pulled all the data.
Okay.
Yeah, there is, there was instructions on how to do that already so we could do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent, good to know. Thank you. All right, you're up again, Madam Clerk, with the precinct boundary changes.
All right. Well, we got the information from the 2020 census and we're on all kinds of deadlines with the state election bureau in terms of our precinct boundaries. We needed to wait till the county like decided theirs and the biggest portion for us is to avoid as many splits as we possibly can. So anybody who, to explain what splits are, is that the, usually we get down to the county level where they draw their lines and if it goes through a middle of a precinct, that means that there could be two, potentially two, maybe even three different kinds of ballot styles when you go into that one voting place that a, that an election worker will have to decide which one that you're supposed to get. Well, any more steps that you add into the process is more of a chance for error, you know, human error. So we try to avoid that as much as we possibly can. So that was, and that was one of the things that we were looking at. The proposal that we have right now in front of you does have one split, our last one also had one split. Sometimes it just can't be avoided, but try to minimize it as much as possible. The other task that we have that we can only do every 10 years is try to balance out our wards and get them as close as we can to the same amount of voters in each. And we can only do that once every 10 years. This is the time to do that too. We're also under deadlines that we have to have the cards mailed by, by March 4th if we want them in time for the May election. Otherwise, we're talking the August election and we would have to have them mailed in June. And because of some other time constraints of many, many events, festivals and everything else in June that our office is doing and mailing out a new voter registration card to all twenty-six thousand registered voters does cause some mail to come back and some, some stuff to happen there. So this is something we would like to take care of before all of that. And that's why we think the March is, feels more comfortable to us. This is going to be our, you know, less busy time to do that. So we broke down, we did not make or suggest a lot of changes. There is a spreadsheet in there. I don't know if you can get that on, we don't have it on there, do we?
We do for tomorrow.
Okay, for tomorrow, that's fine.
Want me to?
Yeah. So. Our, oh, by the way, our election commission did meet and review the whole plan and did sign a resolution for it. But you can see where some lines were moved in here. It's kind of hard to explain what the map looks like, but you have the.
They're circled.
They're circled on here in terms of what the changes are. There, we did figure out that the Amazon building should have been in a different precinct, so we did put that where it does belong. Thank you for pointing that out. In 10 years, nobody pointed that out to us till like a couple of months ago, so.
I didn't believe Commissioner Ramsey when he told me it first.
Nobody believed me. When I said this is in my word, you're a liar.
Like, no, it's not.
Yes, it is.
And I didn't know what he was talking about either, so we were all surprised together. But if you look at precinct 11, there's like this little chunk of people, Kim is trying to find it for us, but that are on the other side of the expressway. It just kind of makes sense that they go in with precinct nine, you know, that just kind of, you know.
Pinch down you're referring to? Oh, that area, okay, yeah.
It's right here.
Over by St. Mary's.
That makes sense to add to precinct nine, yeah.
Yeah, just to move that over. And then.
Not a lot of people that live there anyhow.
No, there, it was really very small.
Not many living people there.
Right, I was going to say, not very many.
The cemetery.
Yeah, St. Mary's, right.
Don't even go down that road. So, and then we have precinct 12 and 10. So we had to move some people over here because we had to balance, this is where we had to balance out a ward and we had to get some people out of one ward into another and that was, so you see that little area of purple people, which is Royalson, Nolan, Palmer and Moore, by moving them into precinct 10 gets us closer to those numbers. And it was a clean break, which is, that is something that's under the law, it's got to be like a natural boundary, it's got to be a straight line, or it's got to be something. It can't just be like, you know, zigzagging along houses or something like that, it doesn't work that way. There we go, thank you, Kim.
Nice part of that adjustment as well is that the entirety of Nim's neighborhood will be in one precinct rather than broken into multiple precincts.
Exactly.
Good. So, yeah, you got that? Yep. So for the audience people, so you can see it, so this is what we were just talking about, this little section of people right here from precinct 12 into precinct 10. And as I just explained, that puts all the Nims on people into the same neighborhood. And then again, precinct 11, this little section of people that on that side of US-31, that would be put in precinct nine, which really makes sense for them to be closer into their own neighborhood. And then we have one more in precinct one and two. Again, this was about balancing people and I know that we've had people asking us before about some people that were very close to Smith Rierson building but not voting at Smith Rierson. And again, when moves get like that changed, the line has to be drawn somewhere and it's all about numbers at the time. But we were able to reevaluate that and make some suggestions and adjustments there. So we were able to move this whole section that you see circled right there into precinct five, which then gets them over into, you know, Smith Rierson and it takes them up to Getty. So again, that's a nice clean break and Getty Street is a really nice one. And it goes all the way up, I mean, you can't tell right here, but that whole empty swampland or whatever, I don't know if that was.
Precinct two, yeah.
What is that called? I don't know.
River Flats. The River Flats.
Future Development area is also in there, so that can go, can also go in there as well. So it looks like a much bigger area being moved than, than it does. But those were the three, it was really just about balancing the numbers with wards and just making those nice clean breaks and getting people closer to their precinct.
Anne, so you, so this stuff over here, Butler, Yuba, all this, all this stuff up here becomes purple?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the whole area, I'm sorry, yeah, we should have made that.
Everything from Getty, Getty to the west, all the way up north becomes precinct five.
Yes, that's correct.
There's not much residential up here.
No, there isn't, no, no, no.
And the one person that already lives on the Causeway is already in purple.
Yeah. Ends up being two hundred and ninety-nine people in that whole big area.
And, and Getty Street would be the, the actual boundary line, cutoff point, nothing?
So one side of Getty is in precinct five and the other side of Getty is in precinct two.
It was like that before too, 10 years ago, pretty close, wasn't it?
Possible.
Yeah.
It could have, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
See, the numbers, because we're only allowed 2,999 registered voters in a precinct. And so that's another reason why they're adjusted midterm, because we're not allowed to go over that. We get, we get in trouble by the state if we do. There's pending legislation to make those 5,000 because now that people can vote by absentee and so many people are, and that completely makes sense to us that they do that, but until the law changes, we have to stay under that 2,999.
Two precincts per ward.
So everyone, all residents though, would get an updated?
So everybody's going to get a new card because your congressional district number changed. So just based on that, we have to mail out to everybody. There are some precinct locations that we want to look at, but because of our deadline right now, we haven't been able to determine that, but we do want to revisit that again of maybe possibly going into some churches because, you know, we've got Muskegon Middle School that is going to be going away that hosts two precincts. Or Cat School would love for us to go somewhere else. And so with Glenside School, those are the four that we really, and we have visited and visited and I mean, we're just really, the parameters that allow us to be a precinct are, there's, there's just many rules that we're really just kind of getting down to those churches again and, but, and I still would like to, we do have to mail them a new card too, but maybe we can do that after, we can get through this hole.
That's what I was going to ask, in addition to the, everybody's new car, is there anything extra to do for anybody who is going to be going to a new polling place? Just, I don't know, shall we just made an extra effort to make sure they know you're in a different precinct now?
We, we put up, well, we do put up maps and signs in the places, but it's like, it's not very many people that are impacted.
Right, that's why I'm wondering, is it worth it to do some, like, it's not that many people, but I would just hate for someone to show up to vote.
We do put up, yeah, and that's why we do like the May election, because it kind of like, it's also a smaller election, then you have the August election to try again till you get to the November election. And then we move people there. And really, it's just honestly, I think it's, it's just three precincts that we're moving people out of and those are the ones that we want to make sure that there was more awareness and we could put somebody at the door maybe for the November election. May and August, it really doesn't make sense, but maybe November, we could have somebody at the door just to make sure people are in the right precinct. Yeah, good thought.
Commissioners, any other questions or input? Well, the folks in Jackson Hill Apartments are going to be rather happy that they have been added to precinct five and can vote at Smith Rierson in their own neighborhood.
Yes.
So they'll be quite happy about that, thank you.
We worked hard to do that, yes.
And we'll look forward to potential new precincts, places in the future. I realize it's not going to be able to get done before the May election, but subsequent elections and, you know, we've talked about it before, now that we have no reason absentee voting, thankfully.
Right.
And anyone can, can vote by absentee. My previous concern in years past about locating in places of religious centers is no longer there. I was concerned about locating in religious centers just as, because of the risk of people not feeling comfortable going to them for whatever reason and then being disenfranchised. But that was back when you couldn't do no reason absentee voting. Now we can, so if someone does have that concern, at least they can avail themselves of absentee voting.
And I would prefer to wait till 2023 to make changes to the precincts as long as all of our precincts are open and that, because then we'll get through the big portion of it and everybody will get comfortable and then we can evaluate. I think that would be better than trying to move people during a busy election year.
You're the clerk, you know how to run up for our elections.
I really do.
Better than any one of us up here.
Unless a building closes on us, I, I think that's the best for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioners, final, final call, questions, input? No? All right, so this is on our agenda for tomorrow for adoption.
Correct.
All right. And before we go to public comment, is there any other business from the commission or are there any questions about items on our general session agenda tomorrow that have not been covered tonight that you would like to address or inquire about? Nope? All right, we are going to move to public comment. First up, we've got Ms. Hillborne. Maybe give your name and address and the organization you represent, because you have reached out beforehand and recognized as a registered group, we're going to afford you 10 minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Hannah Hillborne, my address is 3320 Peck Street. I am the founding member of Muskegon Against Northern Biomedical Research Animal Testing Site, which started out as a Facebook group for camaraderie but became a little bit bigger than that. My goal in speaking to you today is to represent nearly 3,000 residents and nearby community members who have joined either our group or signed our petition. For perspective, the highest vote count an elected leader for the city of Muskegon received last November was 2,314. I hope to also bring awareness to our concern about the efficacy of animal testing and the lasting negative effects it will have on the Muskegon community and further ask for a revote on the matter. Finalization is rarely unable to be undone. We are working to educate the community daily about the unnecessary, cruel and obsolete use of animals for chemical, cosmetic and biomedical research and to help citizens understand the issues framed within this context of the city, framed within the context of the city of Muskegon's policies, values and mission statement. This brings me to the first and probably most repeated concern our group members have expressed. The new leadership ran on a campaign promising transparency because you recognize this as an issue that the city of Muskegon struggles with and promised people affected by the governance that you would fight against a non-transparent leadership. The city of Muskegon's value statement says you shall provide all services in a professional, ethical, courteous and cost-effective manner and improve the quality of life for citizens through good stewardship, excellent service and leadership for the greater community. Echoing the voices of numerous members, a significant portion of whom were active in your campaigns, this promise and the values adopted by the city of Muskegon are not upheld by the new leadership even in the first month and you have violated the public trust. The response from elected officials in city government is that the sale of the property to Northern Biomedical Research was placed on the agenda two consecutive meetings in a row, but this was not done in a transparent way. With an agenda topic, when an agenda topic is written as sale at such and such property, you are not being transparent as to the proposed use and community members do not refer to buildings within their city by their address but by their title. A company registered with the Michigan Secretary of State a week before the first meeting on this matter, simply called 2725 Old Hough LLC, is listed as purchaser in the agenda packet, so even if the public were to scour every page of the nearly 200-page agenda packet, it would still not be clear what company is planning to use the property. it would still not be clear what company is planning to use the property. Given protests and other groups being formed in opposition of Northern Biomedical Research in the past after relocating from Sherman to Pontaluna, all of the information made public prior to your vote seems to be written in vaguely language intentionally, vague language intentionally. Transparency does not require research on the part of citizens. There is precedence of other city of Muskegon dealings with controversial issues such as Planned Parenthood leaving the Health Department building, bringing a substance abuse facility to Sheldon Park neighborhood, and implementing a human traffic resource center within the city being made more public and with much more consideration for public voice. Why are neighbors notified prior to finalization for some hot-button issues and not others? Even if there is no public money currently used at twenty-seven twenty-five Old Hough, it's the responsibility of leadership to assure they are implementing decisions that align with citizen voice. To quote an article written by Lynn Moore for MLive published just four months ago on September thirty, twenty twenty-one, bowing to vocal neighborhood opposition, Muskegon Commissioners rejected a proposed two-point-eight million residential substance abuse treatment center, but not before they expressed frustration with angry sentiments expressed by residents, I believe that was mostly you. And commissioners said they were conflicted over allowing needed treatment to go forward and respecting the concerns of the neighborhood. While I cannot fathom drawing a parallel between addressing much-needed social health issues like human trafficking and substance abuse with animal cruelty, I recognize them as controversial topics. The question arises as to why the voice of citizens is not only welcomed, but listened to for some and not others. It also does not bode well for Muskegon's reputation that a city would choose to listen to the voice of a community when it comes to denying substance abuse facilities, but not when it comes to not allowing animal cruelty and death in their own backyards. When the news covered the approval of the sale to an animal testing facility, it was a point of pride for some of you that this job would, this sale would bring seventy jobs to Muskegon. The average yearly salary for these jobs is eighty thousand dollars. Seventy jobs is not a big enough number to be a point of pride, and certainly not if the jobs do not match the workforce of Muskegon. You are simply happy about the income tax revenue and do not care that this facility is doing nothing for the betterment of everyday Muskegon citizens. By abandoning the primary workforce to make the kinds of decisions you are making, you are either depending on trickle-down economics or just don't care about the marginalized and lower-income families. Neither is a good option and does not live up to the America's Strongest Town Award Muskegon received just four years ago. You strengthen a community by strengthening the marginalized populations first. The sentiment was echoed a bit better in the city's original plan for this property. According to the agenda packet from the Commissioners' meeting on March ninth, twenty twenty-one, wherein a request for proposals for the property was made, a significant qualifier for a purchaser would be to bring jobs to Muskegon that match the workforce. To quote, quote line item C marked redevelopment objectives, the property was to quote, "create particular opportunity for C residents to gain employment," end quote. Under the line item marked evaluation criteria, quote, "ability to attract a diverse employment base representative of all members of the Muskegon community," end quote, is listed. Neither criteria are met with seventy employees, most of which will have extensive biomedical training and advanced degrees. The only conclusion I can come to for why this property is being sold to Northern Biomedical Research despite not checking qualifying boxes is because to this commission, money in the pocket of the city is more important than money in the pocket of its residents. Further relating to the request for property proposals last March, the business model of Northern Biomedical Research is contrary to the money the city spent developing the property. Because NBR itself does not align with any part of the call for proposals, the concept of an industrial park is to support heavy industry. The city spent millions of dollars upgrading facilities which included major stormwater and water transmission lines, electric utilities, and heavier roads, all to support industrial and production businesses, not cruel, unnecessary, and outdated animal testing labs. An animal testing facility is a loss for Muskegon ethically and financially. You are losing the potential for larger operations and potentially hundreds of locally filled jobs. Underline item D marks specific areas of interest, automotive, aerospace, plastics molding warehouses, food processing, and alternative energy are listed as the targeted industries. It's also listed under evaluation criteria that the business seeking to move into this location creates substantial positive economic impact on the city's service economy by increasing the industrial and commercial use of the property. What I do see in this agenda document that may have gotten the attention of NBR is that the property is quote, "conveniently located in a secluded area on the dead end of Old Hough Drive." Given that every resident I have spoken to near both the old Sherman site and the new Pontaluna road site, where underwear animal testing was happening in their backyards, I can assume this was by design, and the seclusion is a particularly attractive draw for Northern Biomedical Research. Neighbors in the township of Muskegon are in closer proximity to the facility than Muskegon residents, which brings up confusion as to why this was a city vote issue and did not involve county commissioners. Another point many residents of Muskegon involved with animal welfare are concerned with, given that they are informed regarding the ins and outs of the drachrony and practice of animal testing, is that this business will not be sustainable. There are bills sitting with various committees within our state senate and the United States Congress waiting to be passed regarding the practice and to allow the FDA to no longer require animal testing as phase one for approval. These bills are garnishing a lot of attention within the animal rights communities, and I know personally our group has been working hard to contact legislatures, legislators to push for their passing. The EPA plans to substantially reduce testing on animals, including those required within the EPA itself, as well as those they require other businesses to conduct before twenty twenty-five, three more years, and to end them as a requirement altogether by twenty thirty-five. Because animal bodies are unable to always accurately predict human responses to a drug, and because of scientists and researchers themselves speaking out about their hardships with the realities of animal testing, alternatives have been making rapid progress in recent years. While it may be ingrained in the minds of many that this is a necessary evil, a sentiment I heard reiterated by members of this commission, that is not true. In silico and in vitro methods, also known as computer-based and test tube methods, are rapidly advancing to the point where they are now up for consideration as alternatives for FDA approval for medical research and drugs, which is now waiting on a congressional vote, for which we are dedicated to rally. In vitro studies have become so advanced that it's now possible to predict how drugs will behave in virtually any part of the human body and in any state of disease. In silico techniques can now predict how a drug will behave in the human body, wherein the medication will target, wherein the body the medication will target, and even the potential side effects. When reading an article regarding the potential animal testing facility here in Muskegon, it seemed members of this commission were excited that Muskegon could potentially be part of medical advancement. Had everyone on this commission made an informed decision and taken the proper time to delve deeper into the ethics and science behind animal testing, you would know that excitement is unfounded. The only way for animal testing to advance medical research is by being an unnecessary and cruel hoop for scientists to jump through to get FDA approval. Because it is now well-known in scientific communities that attempting to replicate human disease or toxicity in animals by unnaturally creating symptoms in lab animals has major scientific limitations, the push for new methods to be approved for FDA approval of research and drugs is not only coming from animal rights activists anymore, but the very scientists performing the research. More often than not, the symptoms and responses to potential treatments seen in other species are vastly different to those in human patients. According to the FDA itself, the majority of medicines that appear safe in animal studies fail human trials. Animal rights groups and groups involved with advancing medical science cite this statistic as ninety percent. These failures in drug development and medical research that never comes to fruition causes millions of animals to suffer from forced ingestion, force-feeding, purposeful exposure to disease and vivisection, and die in vain every year. For those who think more in terms of financial implications, this means a waste of significant resources. For those who champion the phrase, "I care about animals, but I care about saving human lives more," this means human health and safety is at risk in clinical trials. Humans who were falsely under the impression the drugs and treatments they were receiving were safe because they've passed animal trials. With advancements in alternatives to animal research to the benefit of both human and animal species, the push for animal testing is no longer, to no longer be a legal requirement as strong, and has already passed in the European Union and other countries. As hard as it may be to look for reasons aside from animal cruelty and suffering, to not want it happening literally down, literally down the road from where I personally volunteer in animal rescue, it will not be sustainable. Before my youngest is even finished with school, the EPA will have eradicated the practice for approval within their agency, and if the FDA hasn't already by then, will follow shortly after. Can abatement supply be recouped in just thirteen years? Are you prepared to leave the city with a second empty former animal testing site? Nine-thirty Sherman still sits empty. While you may no longer be serving on this commission in this projected and short timeline for this practice to no longer be required, you will be leaving the city with yet another empty haunted complex, and that will be your legacy, cruelty and blight.
Thank you, Ms. Hillborne. Appreciate you sharing your input and perspective with us. Um, if you'd be so kind as to share uh your written remarks with the commission, we have um one member absent, and um, it may be helpful for us to be able to digest it as well in, in written rather than just spoken word, I appreciate that, thank you. And we have uh Ms. McIntosh. Welcome, if you give your name and address.
Hello, um, my name is Maria McIntosh. I live in the Jackson Hill area, hopefully it's nice. Um, I am here as um to send spokeswoman with Coalition Three and One C for us. And Coalition Three and One C was formed between three neighborhood presidents and the residents of McLaughlin, Angel, and Jackson Hill Neighborhood Associations um to aid in the issues affecting minorities and those with other socioeconomic concerns within these areas. We are objecting to the current precinct, precinct boundary changes for Ward Two, which include the aforementioned areas. We are basing this on the Fifteenth Amendment in the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. The Fifteenth Amendment states, "The rights of citizens of the United States to vote should not be denied or abridged by the United States or any state on account of race, color, or previous condition under observance." Section two of the Voting Rights Act mandates that no standard practice or procedure shall be imposed or applied by any state or political subdivision to deny or abridge the right of any citizen of the United States to vote on account of race, color. Um, and in the context of redistricting, federal law provides that the majority-minority districts can be created in order to prevent the dilution of minority voting strength within these areas. So, to substantiate what we're asking, um, we instead propose that instead of pulling from precincts ten and precinct two, that the city pull from precinct three, which is the Steel neighborhood. Um, as according to the twenty-twenty census, it ranks number two for our area, um, with a total of fifty-four percent um of all the, um, I believe it's fourteen neighborhoods, with the highest percentage of African-American concentration. The Steel neighborhood is adjacent to the Angel neighborhood and shouldn't affect any other boundary lines. This helps to strengthen our commitment to supporting the majority-minority districts as outlined in the Fifteenth Amendment in the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. This also strengthens our vote and will not dilute it. We're asking that the commission take this into consideration and amend the proposal that is on the table right now. Thank you.
Could you repeat um?
What precincts?
Yeah, what precincts you were encouraging us to consider?
So, I, from my research, this Steel area falls under precinct three. And so we're asking um that instead um of precinct ten, which is the one in precinct two, that you take into account precinct three, which is Steel. And they have, I believe, they have a percentage of total population of six hundred and ninety-three. I believe that's a little less than the amount of the two areas that you're defining, if my math is correct. It'll be a little off.
I'm still not quite following exactly what uh you're asking us, so, um, I know I have your contact information, um.
So basically, as I understand it, under this proposal, you're asking that um you pull from precincts ten and precinct two, which part of it was the Amazon, and then there was another one, another area. So, well, we're asking that instead of pulling from there and to help strengthen our majority-minority districts, that we're asking that you pull from the Steel area, which has a higher percentage of African-American, and it runs adjacent to our current.
Those are already in the same ward, so it wouldn't make a difference in terms of representation?
Well, the Steel, Steel isn't.
It's precinct three, and that's part of Ward One. So that wouldn't change representation there, um, it's still, right now it's Commissioner Hood. Um, and so that wouldn't, wouldn't um influence that.
Well, we're on the impression that part of Commissioner Hood's district is part of um another precinct as well.
Yes, uh, Ward One encompasses four precincts, precincts one, two, three, and four.
Okay. All right, we just wanted to make sure that our vote isn't diluted. So we wanted to make sure that we brought that to the table and make sure that we are being taken in consideration in regards to the majority-minority um precinct and the redistricting.
That's important, particularly in the context of what, you know, our, our, our friends over in Detroit are, are feeling and facing right now.
They lost almost fifty percent.
Uh, redistricting, uh, but that's very important for us to consider, and we are, we have a, a diverse commission, and we wanna maintain our diverse commission to reflect our awesomely diverse uh community.
Okay, all right, well, thank you so much, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Maria. All right, anyone else from the audience wish to give remarks? Being none, we'll move on to our next meeting, we have a Community Relations Committee meeting after this. The public is wel, welcome to remain for that, um, but it is a committee of the whole. Um, we have some appointments to make and some business to conduct in that regard. So before we move from this meeting to that meeting, uh, welcome a motion to adjourn from a, our work session.
Move to adjourn, um, commission meeting and move into the work session.
All right, I have a motion from uh Commissioner German, and uh supported by Commissioner Sinclair to adjourn. All in favor? Say aye. Close, same sign.